Good morning. This is the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency public hearing for the BRP Farmingville LLC project. It is 10:00 on January 10, 2022. I'm going to read the public hearing notice for the record. Notice of Fourth Supplemental Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing pursuant to Article 18A of the New York State General Municipal Law will be held by the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, the agency, on the 10th day of January 2022 at 10:00 a.m. local time at the agency's offices located at the Town of Brookhaven Town Hall, second floor, One Independence Hill, Farmingville, New York, 11738, in connection with the following matters. BRP Farmingville LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the state of New York on behalf of itself and/or the principles of BRP Farmingville LLC and/or an entity formed or to be formed on behalf of any of the foregoing collectively BRP, submitted its application for financial assistance, the original application, to the agency for assistance in connection with a) the acquisition of an approximately 62-acre parcel of land located at 510 Horse Block Road, Farmingville, New York, also known as three tax map numbers 0200-626.00-03.00-039.500 and 040.000 and 0200-653.00-07.00-001.000. Collectively, the land. B) One, the demolition of an approximately 5,000-square-foot building located thereon. Two, the renovation and equipping of an approximately 3,000-square-foot building located thereon. I'm sorry. Two, the renovation and equipping of an approximately 3,000-square-foot building located thereon. And three, the construction, equipping, and furnishing of multiple buildings to include 292 residential units, of which 10% will be set aside as affordable units and consisting of 164 two-bedroom units with two baths, 77 two- and three-bedroom townhouse-style units with two and two-and-a-half baths, and 51 single-family detached-style cottages, which will be three- and/or four-bedroom homes with two and two-and-a-half baths, including an approximately 7,500-square-foot clubhouse with pools and outdoor activities, a state-of-the-art 150,000-gallon per day on-site wastewater treatment plant, a seven-acre park with walking trails for use by all residents of Farmingville, and an approximately 1,200-square-foot building to be constructed and donated for use by the Farmingville Chamber of Commerce as an office together with the acquisition, installation, and equipping of improvements, structures, and other related facilities attached to the land, the improvements, and c) the acquisition and installation there on certain equipment and personal property, including but not limited to including common areas consisting of recreational areas and other amenities and the furnishing thereof, including but not limited to furniture appliances in the units, kitchen equipment, the equipment, and together with the land and the improvements of the facility, which facility is to be subleased by the agency to BRP to be known as the arboretum at Farmingville and used by BRP to provide multifamily housing and outdoor recreational green space for the residents of Farmingville, the project. The agency previously held a public hearing on August 20, 2019. Subsequent to the submission of the original application by BRP to the agency, BRP notified the agency of a change of ownership structure of the facility and requested that the agency consent to amend the first amendment to the application to reflect that Brookhaven Venture LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the state of New York on behalf of itself and/or the principles of Brookhaven Venture LLC and/or an entity formed or to be formed on behalf of any of the foregoing, the Brookhaven Venture, will be the fee owner of the project. The facility will be initially owned, operated, and/or managed by Brookhaven Venture. The agency previously held a supplemental public hearing on March 24, 2020. Subsequent to the supplemental public hearing, Brookhaven Venture notified the agency that due to the dramatic changes in the construction and materials market caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, the original project costs outlined in the application are out of date and significantly lower than the currently anticipated costs. In connection with the increased costs, Brookhaven Venture requested that the agency consent to a second amendment to the original application, the second amendment to the application, to reflect the current cost of the project. The agency previously held a second supplemental public hearing on April 7, 2021. Subsequent to the second supplemental public hearing, Brookhaven Venture previously notified the agency that due to the continued dramatic changes in construction and materials markets caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, the original project costs outlined in the application, as amended, have increased over the estimated anticipated costs. In connection with the increased costs, Brookhaven Venture requested that the agency consent to a third amendment to the original application, the third amendment to the application, to reflect current costs of the project. The agency previously held a third supplemental public hearing on November 16, 2021. Subsequent to the third supplemental public hearing, Brookhaven Venture notified the agency that it intends to enter into a lease-backed transaction with the agency with respect to the project, and then subsequently transfer ownership of the facility to the Brookhaven Residents LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the state of New York on behalf of itself and/or the principles of the Brookhaven Residents LLC and/or an entity formed or to be formed on behalf of any of the foregoing, the company. Subsequent to such transfer of ownership, Brookhaven Venture will assign its leasehold interest in the facility to the company, and the facility will be owned, operated, and/or managed by the company. The agency contemplates that it will provide financial assistance to the company in the form of exemptions for mortgage recording taxes in connection with the financing or any subsequent refinancing of the facility, exemption for sales and use taxes in connection with the construction and equipping of the facility, and exemption of real property taxes, all consistent with the uniform tax exemption policies, UTEP of the agency. A representative of the agency will, at the above-stated time and place, hear and accept written comments from all persons with views in favor of or opposed to either the proposed financial assistance to the company or the location or nature of the facility. Prior to the hearing, all persons will have the opportunity to review on the agency's website, BrookhavenIDA.org, the application for financial assistance filed by the company with the agency, and an analysis of the costs and benefits of the proposed facility. Due to COVID-19 protocols, all persons attending the public hearing will be required to wear face masks and maintain proper social distancing. Dated December 30, 2021, Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency, by Lisa M.G. Mulligan, titled Chief Executive Officer. There's no one at this public hearing. I'm going to leave it open for approximately 30 minutes in case anybody cares to make comment. This is the Town of Brookhaven Industrial Development Agency public hearing for the Brookhaven Ventures BRP Farmingville LLC project. There has been no, Brookhaven Residents LLC, there has been no participation, no comment in this public hearing, and hearing none. I am closing this public hearing. It is 10:30 a.m. on
hearing none. I am closing this public hearing. It is ten-thirty AM on January tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you so much.